We call our meeting to order June the 7th, 2021, a regular meeting. And if you would, Mr. Aldrich, would you lead us in front?
Lord, we're grateful to be here today, another opportunity to be in this beautiful place which we live. Thank you that we're able to gather together as the county in order to transact the business of the county. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance, and your direction as we go forward. May everything we say and do be honorable to you. May you give us that which we require in order to make the right decisions, Lord. We thank you for the blessings that we share, the people that's around us, and all the things that we enjoy every day. In Christ's name, amen.
Let him follow the plan for our pledge plea. Mr. Young, would you lead us?
We pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can be seated. Before we get into our meeting, I'd like to thank everyone that's come out today and see a lot of faces that I used to know and hadn't seen them in a while. It's good to see you here today for our county business. And we want to thank all of our county employees. They've worked hard to make the place look nice. Some of you that's been here know that our carpet was tore and all this, so they took it down and had the flooring and carpeted up here, and especially the cleaning. And we want to thank every one of them that worked so hard. And we want to thank you taxpayers because your money comes in and we have to spend it. So we want to thank you for that. All right, we'll move right along today with our agenda, 3.2A. Okay. All right, we're going to have Ben Hutchinson on Zoom, and he's going to speak on all these ordinances that we've got to do.
You want me to give a little introduction? Yeah, okay. As the board may recall, the state enacted a new statute, Chapter 160D, which affects all land use ordinances. The county has eight ordinances pertaining to land use. Mr. Hitchens is an adjunct professor with the School of Government, and we brought him in to assist the county in updating all of our ordinances. There were certain language that the statute required to be updated in the ordinance to update the language to make it compliant with the new statute. And that's what is on before the board today. So what we have planned is a brief overview for the board of the proposed changes, and then we have public hearing schedules beginning at 5:00 regarding the various ordinances to solicit comment from the public, any public comment that there may be regarding changes. So I think the board has the information in front of you regarding all the proposed changes, and I'll turn it over to Ben at this time so he can address the board and get started with his presentation.
Thanks so much, Michelle. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening, Chair Hicks and members of the board. It's been wonderful working with Michelle and the county team on this project. We've got seven ordinances that we've had to update in order to meet the new requirements of Chapter 160D. Y'all will recall that this legislation was passed back in 2019, and local governments throughout the state have until July 1st to update their ordinances and bring them into compliance with the updated framework. The legislation consolidated the various planning and development statutes into one coherent section and also provided a number of updates. So let's take a look now at the highlights from the various updates that we're proposing for the Avery County ordinances. Y'all will have several handouts as part of your packet. One of them is a summary that lists the different major updates. It goes ordinance by ordinance. So we've got the seven different ordinances that were affected. And then you have the detailed markup, the red lines and strike-throughs and underlines that show the exact language that we're proposing as well. So those are a resource for you, and I'll just hit the highlights here and then invite you to ask any additional follow-up questions or make any comments that you might have. So let's start with the high-impact ordinance. And so some of the key changes were we clarified the definition of noise mitigation to make that standard easier to administer. We put in a provision to require that applications have to be complete in order to receive the benefits of permit choice, where an applicant gets to decide whether they are subject to the ordinance at the time of application, or if those ordinances are changing while their project's in review, they can choose the updated standards. But regardless of what they choose, they have to give the county a complete application so that y'all can do your review. We also clarified a provision regarding the resubmital of special-use permit applications to clarify that once the county has made a decision on an SUP, the applicant can only submit the same application if they've made significant changes or the context of their site or the ordinance has changed. We've also clarified, consistent with state statute, that any approval granted by the Board of Commissioners runs with the property, with the land. It doesn't run with the individual applicant. So someone could sell their property, and the person who bought it would still have the same approval granted by the commissioner, subject to the parameters and conditions of that approval. We also clarified the standards regarding the granting of a variance if someone feels they have undue hardship, and the statutes are very specific on the standards that we have to use for that. We also have clarified the quasi-judicial procedures that we use when we hear a special-use permit or when we hear an appeal of an administrative decision or when we review a variance. So the ordinance now has the latest language in the statutes in that regard. And we also have incorporated the latest language regarding enforcement of violations. The statutes now provide a couple of new mechanisms for the county to let folks know if they are in violation, so we want to make sure to include that as options for y'all. Let's see. Now, as we go, so that's the first ordinance. Would you like me to stop and just check in with you as we complete each review and see if you have any more questions? Would that be helpful, or would you like me to continue to move to the next ordinance?
I thought you just moved on.
Very good. So next ordinance, subdivision ordinance. So we've got updated, again, those same updated enforcement notification procedures. We also clarified the role of the planning board in quasi-judicial cases. The statutes allow the planning board to conduct a preliminary forum, but they don't allow the governing board to actually use any of the information from that forum in their decision, since these are quasi-judicial cases and all the evidence has to be presented in the actual decision-making hearing. So we've clarified that. We've also updated the variance procedures again and the standards for granting a variance to match what's in the statutes. We've also clarified the vested rights framework that affects the period for which an approval is valid, once it's been approved. We've also made a similar update on the completeness review, clarified the period of validity, and also the criteria for granting extensions of a permit. Sometimes we find an applicant runs out of time with their original approval, and they would like an extension, so we provide clear standards for making that decision. We also have updated the standards regarding the performance guarantees, the financial surety provided by developers to help make sure that all the infrastructure in their project is either built by them or is covered by a financial insurity that would allow the county to install it if the developer went bankrupt. Hopefully, that won't happen, but it's important to have that protection. And then there's a new exemption from a kind of subdivision activity associated with probated wills and also an expedited review procedure for certain kinds of subdivisions that haven't been divided and are large tracts of land where only a few lots are being created. So that's the, those are the high points on the subdivision ordinance. I continue, again, stop me if you have any questions or comments. Ordinance number three, flood damage prevention. We've included a provision that is, makes it clear that the county is always using the latest adopted flood maps so that you don't have to update your ordinance whenever you update those flood maps. It always just uses the latest ones. Now, we've got two ordinances that are very, have very similar provisions and very similar updates, the mountain ridge protection ordinance and the maximum building height ordinance. Again, you'll see some similar themes. We've also got this completeness review. We've clarified the quasi-judicial procedure, clarified the planning board's role. We've given, we've recommended including a little bit more time for the board to calendar its hearing on these kinds of cases, to give it more time to just pick a date and get that on the calendar and hold the hearing, so we've moved that up to 60 days. We've also clarified the parameters around which the county can establish conditions of approval on a given case to help make that case fit in appropriately to a given site. We've also clarified the vested rights framework for these kinds of permits, also updated the enforcement procedures again to match the latest statutory language, and likewise clarified the appeals procedures to also match what's in the statutes. The building height ordinance is very similar. It covers areas not covered by the mountain ridge protection ordinance. And so again, we have the exact same list of updates, the completeness review on down through the conditions of approval, on down through appeals. So very similar updates for this ordinance. Then our next, our sixth ordinance is the sexually-oriented business ordinance. The only update we have here is just updating the appeals process to match the latest statutes. And then finally, our last ordinance, the watershed protection ordinance, and the only change here was to update the definition of a subdivision to match the updated statutes. And so that is our review, and with that, I'll turn it back to Michelle and Chair Hicks.
So that's the information for the board. I don't know if the board has any specific questions about anything. Changes were, by and large, required by statute after the legislature changed the law on it, so that's where the changes came from.
Nothing to make him do but accept it.
Well, basically. I mean, it's required, it's what's required by the statute now, and so the purpose of this is to update all of our ordinances and make them compliant with the statute as it is now.
Mr. Hitchens, just to be clear, there was no local input here that we gave. All this was statutory changes about as a result of legislative altering of the statutes and language. Is that correct?
That's correct. There was some discussion. The planning board, of course, reviewed this like it would for any text amendment to your development ordinances, and so we did have discussion there. There were a few comments amongst the planning board members, but they have also recommended adoption of these seven ordinances. So that's right. The vast majority of these changes are simply to comply with the updated state framework.
Thank you.
And we've got to go step by step on this to do one at a time. We've got to go into public hearing, and then we can't take a vote. Then we've got to come back out of public hearing, vote, and then we can go back in to the next one, and it's back and forth until we get them all done. That's the way it has to be.
And that starts at 5:00?
And that starts at 5:00. We'll just move on.
So I guess we can let Ben lead the meeting if the board doesn't have any further questions for him.
We thank you, Ben, for all that you've done.
Thanks so much, Chair Hicks and members of the board. It's been a pleasure working with Michelle and the county. Thank you. Hey, Kevin.
All right, we'll move on with our agenda until we've got our financial budget reported 4:00, and then we go down at 5:00 and do these ordinances. All right. 3.2A, proclamations and awards.
Madam Chairman and Board, we do have one. We have a resolution celebrating the retirement of Mike Sprayberry, whereas Mike Sprayberry has served as Director of Emergency Management since 2013, and whereas Mike Sprayberry will retire in July, and whereas Mike Sprayberry has been an invaluable counselor to Avery County and Avery County Emergency Management, now therefore be resolved that the Avery County Commissioners hereby express their gratitude to Mike Sprayberry for his service to Avery County, and furthermore, resolve that Avery County Commissioners wish Mike Sprayberry continued success in all his endeavors and express our hope for his continued health, happiness, and prosperity. Further resolve that this is a copy of the resolution be presented to Mike Sprayberry as a token of our respect. Adopted this the 7th day of June 2021.
All right, I hear them.
It's to adopt.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adopt, and we have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. We got to meet Mr. David Charles Fance, who's going to retire, and he came all the way up and gave him some awards, and we got to meet Mr. Stanbury, and he's been in there how many years, Phillip?
About. Have to do math. Since 2013, so.
He is.
Right at him. As director for the state.
And he's a well-respected emergency person, and we're glad that he can retire. Everybody needs to retire eventually, and we're glad that he could retire, but we do thank him for taking his time out to come up here, and I think he gave David Charles about three different awards, didn't he?
He's been a lot of help touching the place, too.
Yeah. When we've had floods in Avery County, he was totally on the spot to get help for us, and we know what that's like. All right. We'll go to 3.2B, public comments. Has, we have one person that might have.
We have two. Do you all want to do public comments?
Yes, that'd be great. Mr. Ward?
Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate the service that you guys do with the county. I know it's a thankless job, and I'm used to doing a lot of this myself. My name is Jim Ward, and I'm a resident here for six months of the year. I am also owner of Amber Walker's Real Estate in Bana Alka. You might have seen the little log cabin as you go by the entrance to the Elk River Club. I'm also founder and chairman of the High Country Charitable Foundation, which was started six years ago here. And today, over the last six years, we give over $3 million to local charities just in Avery County for the people and animals of Avery County. I'm also founder of the Advocates for the Care of Animals for Avery County. What I've been told, we are one of the only counties in North Carolina that does not support animal services. Last month, Sheriff Fry asked for your support for him to have a dedicated animal service officer. He explained that an animal service officer would free up personnel from his department who answer over 200 calls a year to take care of animals in distress that average about three hours per call. He also stated that he had a donor who was willing to cover the cost of the first year, possibly future years, to cover the expenses of this new position. Because of the tremendous growth of our county, an animal service officer is needed more than ever. I am hopeful that you will agree with Sheriff Fry for his request for a dedicated person for that job. I'm here on his behalf to offer to the council, which is part of their budgets, and I'll give this to Phillip. Phillip, if you want to grab this. We're willing to put up $100,000 for the expense of the first year of this person under Sheriff Fry, and I'm more than willing to talk to the council at any time. I've met some of you individually a couple of years ago for this, I think, we think, a very needed part of the county with all the new people moving in and all the different animals. I just don't think the sheriff's department can keep up without a dedicated person. Once again, I'd like to thank you for this time. I'm willing to discuss any part of this with you at any time, as far as the present opportunity for these funds or future funds to support the animals of Avery County and anything we can do for us, the High Country Charitable Foundation. I think, Phillip, and a lot of you know who we are, our goal is just to make life better in Avery County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Swincola. I'm a year-round resident of Avery County. I'm here to invite all commissioners, all staff, and anyone hearing my voice over to Lee's McCray College on July 23, 6:30 to 7:30. We're having and organizing, and Aaron Buchanan helped me out just this afternoon with a video conference with Warren Daniel and Dudley Green. Those men are coming over to have a conversation with the people who vote in Avery County so that there can be a hearing of the needs of the people in this area represented in Raleigh. So July 23, 6:30, 7:30, on the campus of Lee's McCray College. You're all invited, and I hope to see you there.
That'll be at the auditorium.
Evan's Auditorium is the current place. If there are more individuals, then Evan's can hold because of whatever CDC requirements, there are other options.
All right. Are there anyone else that wants to speak and publicly comment? If you do, just come right up to the podium, and we'll recognize you. If not, we'll move right along with our agenda, 3.2C, board appointees, High Country Workforce Development.
The board has in front of them a opening to reappoint Edward Henson to the High Country Workforce Development Board. This has been reviewed and advertised, so we need a motion.
All right. Did I hear a motion that we approve Edward Henson?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to reappoint and a second. And all in favor, raise your hand. All right. We took care of that. We have a bunch of review applications for Avery County Economic Development Advisory Committee. How many do we have, Mr. Brown?
We have four, I believe. So we have four-year review to be voted on at our next meeting. We have Eric Berg, Clarence Edward Dean, Doug Owen, and Ann Winkleman. And this morning, I did receive another application. If the board so wishes, we could add a fifth for your review. It was here by 10:00. And Cindy, I don't know, did we advertise the deadline?
No, we didn't. And we extended, we extended the time period.
So I have Terry Hindley Melton.
Is everybody in agreement to let him put them?
It's only the review.
And it is a voluntary board. His is their time, frankly.
All right, so we will consider that one.
I'll get you a copy of that one to review before the next meeting.
All right. It's about.
Four minutes.
Four minutes. I don't see anything that we could do in that amount of time. We've got a lot of long things to do, so let's just recess till exactly one minute before 4:00. And we'll get, we'll get right into our budget. All right, recess. We'll bring our meeting back to order so we can put our managers to work and they can go over our 2021 and 2022 financial bank statements and ordinance and everything that we've got in a book. That's all. All right, go ahead.
We need a motion to go into public here?
Yes, we need a motion to go into our public hearing.
So I move to a public hearing, same budget.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Then a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. We'll turn it over to Commissioner Barrier.
To the Avery County citizens and the board of commissioners, in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 15911, the Avery County Fiscal Year 2122 proposed budget is respectfully presented during this public hearing. The purpose is to inform the public and allow any person the opportunity to express their opinion. The document provides the financial framework for the program and services which Avery County government will be undertaking in the next fiscal year. The budget provides the resources needed to ensure the delivery of governmental services in a physically responsible manner. The proposed budget is a continuation of financially sound and conservative practices Avery County government has established and embraces. The board held budget workshops in order to make changes to the proposed budget. This budget message represents an explanation of the budgetary decisions derived as a result of in-depth dialogue between the county commissioners, county manager, assistant county manager, finance officer, department heads, and changes made during budget workshops. The cumulative total of necessary operational capital expenses considered and a lot of the revenues generated by the departments, combined with state and federal funding, determines the amount of funding which will be necessary from Avery County citizens. The 202122 budget is presented is balanced based on a total property valuation of $4.23 billion. This represents an increase of $95 million or 2.29% over last year's valuation of $4.14 billion. The general tax rate will remain at 48 cents. 48 cents for $100 of valuation, which will generate an estimated $20 million in revenue. The countywide fire tax will remain at 7 cents. The fire commission and volunteer fire departments will receive an estimated $2.8 million in revenue. The combination of these two rates results in an overall tax rate of 55 cents for the 2122 fiscal year. The rate is the same as the last fiscal year. The total general fund budget is set at $31.4 million. This is a 3.67 increase from the 21 fiscal year. General government is increasing $586,000. The increase is primarily attributed to an available-for-appropriation fund for unexpected capital expenditures, repairs, and maintenance. The county continues to take a proactive approach with buildings, general maintenance, and capital service needs. Public safety is increasing $25,000. Capital expenditures for this current year include their vehicle rotation for the sheriff's office, and new tower enhancements and repeaters for communications. Transportation is increasing $15,000. The increase is due to needs in office equipment. Environmental protection is increasing $168,000, primarily to the increase of tonnage now collected through our solid waste department. Economic and physical development is increasing $8,000. The increase is primarily due to the operating expenses of the Avery Community Center. Funding for human resources is increasing $247,248. The increase is primarily due to new methods of state Medicaid programs. Cultural and recreational is increasing $67,000. The primary reason is increased maintenance for the Parks and Rec Department, continued funding for Mountain Alliance Youth Group, new funding for the Avery County Fair and Wildcat Lake. Education remains the same from the previous year's budget. The primary reason is proper planning of capital expenditures. The budget also includes added security for Mail and Community College's main campus. Public safety is the largest expenditure for the county, consuming 30% of the total budget. Education and the Associated Debt Service is the next largest expenditure at 24. Human services is the third at 17, while all other county functions total 29%. We'll now switch to revenue. Property tax revenue is projected to increase $565,000 or 2.91% from the last fiscal year. The increase is due to a $95 million increase in adware and tax base. Local auction sales taxes are projected to bounce back $490,000. Sales tax was estimated to decrease last fiscal year due to the COVID-19 pandemic effect on our economy. Other taxes and licenses are projected to increase $150,000, mainly due to the increase in real estate sales. Intergovernmental revenues are projected to increase $93,000, primarily due to the increased state and federal payments. Licenses and permits are projected to increase $11,000 over last fiscal year. Sales and services are projected to decrease $51,000, primarily due to the decrease in revenue and transportation fees. Investment earnings and other income are projected to increase $145,000 due to lower forecasted investment income. Property tax will generate 64% of the county's revenue, followed by sales taxes at 18%. Intergovernmental transfers at 8%, sales and services at 7%, fund balance appropriation at 0, and all others at 3. Other funds. The fire tax fund budget for the 2122 fiscal year is $2.8 million, or $80,000 more than last fiscal year. The E911 fund budget for fiscal year 2122 is $178,000. This is a decrease of $37,000 from the prior fiscal year. The revaluation fund budget is $153,000 for the fiscal year 2122. Avery County budgets annually for the mandatory revaluation. It should be noted that the county performs an in-house evaluation using existing staff as opposed to contracting the service out. January 2022 will be our next effective date for revaluation. Avery County is proud to report that the county fund balance exceeds the state requirements. This amount provides great financial stability and coverage in the event of a catastrophic event was to strike the county. The county must have the financial resources available to address unknown and unexpected situations that could triple our community if we were found unprepared. This budget for 202122, as presented, does not include any fund balance appropriation and plans for unexpected capital and disastrous needs. Capital projects. Over the past several years, Avery County has developed and adhered to a financial plan designed to promote a pay-as-you-go capital philosophy. As a result of this philosophy, the county has funded and completed the Agriculture Center, the Avery Community Center, the County Recreation Pool. The new Avery County High School addition is also currently under construction as a result of proper capital planning and the use of lottery funds. And the use of some fund balance, Avery County has been able to avoid any tax rate increase for the construction of the high school. The only current major capital project is the Avery County addition and renovation, which started fall of 2019 and is scheduled to finish fall of 2021 at an estimated cost of $20,296,000. Future proposed capital projects is the additional development for the Recreation Department. This budget message is now... For Avery County contains the detailed breakdown of anticipated revenues and expenses for the year to end June 30, 2022. This ordinance is respectfully presented for adoption this the 7th day of June 2021.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion between the commissioners or anyone on the budget for this coming year? We've done a lot of hard work. We spent four or five days on the budget trying to figure out the best way to save and to help our county, and that's what we're in here for. We're servants to the county, and we're here to serve you. And...
Was our sales tax up during the COVID?
Yes. Yes, it did not. So a year ago, the state recommended that we cut the sales tax in our budgets, not knowing what the pandemic was going to cost. But Avery County has been blessed.
I've got one more question. 3911 funds, yeah, well, two really. 3911 funds are down. Is that due to the fact that people are doing away with their land lines?
The funding, the amount that's coming in. I think it's because we have to spend so much of that money, and we can't have too much in the available for appropriations or the fund balance.
But is that not funded? Is there any source for that not a dollar or something per land line per month?
Yeah. If we get that guidance in directly from them, they send us what the revenue's going to be for the following year. And that's what they're projecting for this coming year. And as Phillip said, part of that's due to the fact that they have so much already in fund balance, so they decreased that amount, so...
I've got one more. Sorry. On our revaluation, what is the $150,000? And is that every year?
No. So it's a little higher this year. It does pay salaries, parts of salaries. So you have to establish a revaluation fund because in the past, counties did not. So because we do ours in-house, it will fluctuate. So during a rebau year, you're going to have a few, a little more expense than you will just a general year because you've got to do the maintenance.
Am I right in assuming that really our revaluation goes on constantly?
Absolutely. Seth will attest to that. The day after you do it, January 2nd, something's going to sell, and you start over.
Thank you.
Is there any comments for the public? On the budget?
Well, like Woody said, they have to be some of their 911 funds cut because a lot of people that's got cell service has had their main phones cut off. And that would have to affect it some.
Okay.
All right.
We need a motion to come out of a public hearing.
Does the commissioners, I mean, do we may want to speak on the budget as a public comment besides questions or anything?
I think we've done well with what, what we've done with the budget and what we've been able to do for the county, for the people of the county.
Yeah, we've had a decrease in taxes.
Yeah.
Had some good major capital projects that we took on. So I think we've done good to keep it at the rate it's at.
And I would like to say that the Avery County Community Building has already served its person during the COVID. Where we have been able to have accompanied that many people in to get their COVID shots if we hadn't had to have the community building. And I'm sure each one that went to the community building then got to see what your tax money has done in Avery County. And we just about got June, didn't it? Mr. Barrier filled us?
Filled up, yes.
On people renting the building, the house things. So that was, that's a big asset to the county.
We'll say that last year, whenever we did the budget, was, was one that we presented with some fear and trepidation because of all the unknowns in society and in what was going to be happening. We were, we were working on the budget right at the beginning of a lot of the lockdowns and a lot of the things that were taking place. So we, we really, it was difficult to project because we didn't know what was going to be happening around us. And anything, anytime that you work with something as complex as this budget, there's a lot of things outside your control. And you accept that, but there was an uncomfortable number of things outside our control. So I think our budgeting process for last year was...
Really hard.
Was really hard, but it worked well considering that so much of what we projected really did not come to pass in the way that we thought it would. And it was all in all a positive year. And the, the amount of work that went on from the county's departments to work together to meet the needs that presented themselves, I think were a real testament to the people around here and the willingness to work together for the common good. And I really appreciate everyone that did that. And as we go forward with these, the new structures and new buildings, all of this is, is the people's properties. And like with this new community building, the pool and all like that, the, the fees are, you know, very low because it's your money that presented them, that made them. And so I'm real pleased with what we were able to do in the midst of an uncertain time. And this budget, as just was illustrating the message, is increased because of our valuation being increased, and we're fortunate in that. But we did not take that for granted and are very aware of the, the need to be fiscally conservative. And as we look around other counties within the state, we are fortunate with our adware and tax rate and the, the support and the base that we have to work from. And it's a pleasure to be a part of that.
And I'd like to say that during this pandemic, that we saw that there's going to be so much paperwork to it that we couldn't handle it all. So we hired a lady that has worked in emergency management. She knows things that we didn't know. And she said, "Apply for this and apply for that." And we was able, like our mobile unit we use for the shots and went places, we was able to get that. And she has worked very hard to get some of your taxpayers' money back from the COVID. So we were...
And continuing to work.
Yeah. And that'll all go back into the general fund. Anything else from the commissioners? If not, do I hear a motion that we go out of our hearing for the... Public hearing for the budget? Does anyone want to make that motion?
So I move that we dismiss from public hearing for the budget.
Second.
All right, when you have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Now, if everybody that has spoke on the budget, let's see how many agrees with the budget. Do I have a motion that we accept the budget for 2021 and 2022 as read?
So move, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this budget, raise your hand. All right. So we've got our budget for this... So, we've got our budget for this year and the rest of this year and the rest, and next year. All right, it's not quite five o'clock, so we'll move on down and try to take care of some of the other things. I believe we can take care of our tax administrator, if you would come up and do your report for us. And this is not Bruce Daniels. He's changed a lot of the ideas.
Let's see, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. So, the make collection totals for approval is fifty-five thousand dollars, one hundred and, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Do I hear a motion that we adopt it? All right.
Second.
We've got a motion to approve and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All right?
Okay, and we have no releases for this month?
Yes.
Yay! That's the reason you changed that one.
That's right.
We'll let you give the report more often.
That's right. Good luck, Charlie. Given the sales total for May 2021, we have a hundred and two sales for May, and the ratio of seventy percent, which is a little lower than last year at May because we're getting closer to a rebal, so it was eighty-three percent at last May and it's seventy percent this May, so, the sales, sales ratio.
And a hundred and two sales this year versus thirty-one last year.
Yes, sir.
That tells you where we're at.
Yes, sir.
You guys, you all good, neither, they might want to ask a question?
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, keep it great. So, this is his first time. Great job.
All right. All right, let's talk about three-point-three C, the property.
Well, I think we could go ahead and get three-point-three A since we've got so many people in here.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do three-point-three A, the subdivision approval of Eagles Crest and Eagles Springs.
So, the Avery County Planning Board has approved the final two plats for Eagles Nest Holdings Development. The two areas requesting final approval are as follows: Eagles Crest Lots EC1 through EC12, and Eagle Springs at Eagles Nest Lots, Eagle Springs 70 through Eagle Springs 93.
Madam Chairwoman, Board, appreciate the time this afternoon. We do have a couple plats coming for you. We hope to get approvals on. Also, thank everybody coming out this afternoon in the audience, kind of get straight to, the reason we have so many in attendance this afternoon is I did get word from a little birdie earlier in the day, about two hours ago, that we may have a little bit of opposition or a little bit of heartburn still on some stuff that we've talked about in the previous meetings on Eagles Nest and its expansion and growth on what we're doing on the mountain. Also, other areas in the county as far as moving into subdivisions and other things that we're doing on, in Avery County. And like I said, I got that call about two hours before the meeting, I called just a few of the vendors that work on Eagles Nest. This is about five percent to ten percent of the business owners up there. If I'd had a little more time, we would have to have it at Avery County High School. Just wanted to give a good observation for the board to how many jobs and how much money is produced for the county through Eagles Nest by itself. And that's not counting other subdivisions we have going, other developments in the county. You know, and I do appreciate, we have a wide range of building contractors. We have soil scientists, engineers, we've got both gentlemen from New River Building Supply, Building Supply, we've got paving contractors, septic grading guys, roofing companies. I don't know, we've got a little bit of everybody, and like I say, I had about thirty minutes just to make a few phone calls, and really just wanted them to come out, you know, for us moving forward. You know, Avery County's my home, love to see it grow, love to be able to help create jobs in the county. I would say right now, and I would argue with anybody, that there is a bigger job creator and a bigger tax base creator for the county than Eagles Nest on its own. And these gentlemen and ladies in the audience here, I'm sure will tell you the same thing, that seventy-five to eighty percent of everybody's business that's going out is solely in Eagles Nest. So, it's a huge, huge factor in Avery County. Not only just with the company represented here, it's a trickle-down effect with the guys from New River, the building supplies, you go into the concrete companies, the gravel yards, you know, plumbers, electricians, HBHC, across the board, it's a huge trickle-down effect. Now, the areas it's got into would also be even cleaning services, you know, just all the way across the board, it's just continuous. Also, we had conversations, I know Mr. Kitter talked to some folks in Banner Elk was talking with restaurant owners and stuff, that basically it's given them the ability to remodel and reface Banner Elk with restaurants and things coming in because of the increase. And I know not everybody's for development, I know not everybody's for the increase of people coming into the county, but at the end of the day, we talk about economics and economic development boards and committees, we have to work with what we have and what works for the county, and that would be development of the county. I'm born and raised here, been all over the mountain in the county, Dr. I Poetwiler's and be out in the woods, but at the end of the day, I also like to put food on the table for my kids, my families. From my, you know, speaking here for now, speaking for Eagles Nest and Waterfront Group, speaking for, as a county resident, as a county business owner, wills contracting, just looking at the employees that we employ in-house, which are all county residents, and being able to put food on the table for them too is a tremendous blessing that I don't take lightly at all, and I know each business owner here feels the exact same way as I do. And so, I would just like to, in saying that, say that, you know, we have had some opposition, not as much from the board, but we do tend to get quite a bit from the planning board, not really sure why we get it there. I would ask and request that, you know, maybe you just look into that board a little closer on how that's run and how things go and proceed there. Every time I go to those board meetings, it is a fight to get anything, just to get in front of you guys. We don't ask for any special favors, we want to do it by the book, we took you guys through the mountain, I think you would all have to say that we do do it the right way and that there's probably not a nicer community in the county, and, you know, we have the special ability to be able to put the land on the ground, development on the ground, and sell it faster than any other company in the United States. I say that we have problems in different areas of the planning board just because we do work all over the United States. I was in Oklahoma on a big project we're going a couple weeks ago, we've got them in cashiers, I've got them in West Virginia, Tennessee, we just had a tremendous day in Tennessee just past Saturday in Watauga Lake. We deal with planning boards and county offices across, across the country, and the only one we ever have any opposition with would be the planning board of Avery County. And not real sure why that is, most of the time that when it goes through the ordinance administrator, which would be in inspections Department, once it gets to the planning board, it's usually a pretty straightforward process, it's a summary, more like what we usually do for you guys. So, I would ask that you kind of watch and see how that is being handled and how that goes through. No special favors, we just want to be treated fairly and want to keep things going. I would bring up the comment that we have got before is, where does it stop? Where does Eagles Nest end? Where does it stop? For myself, and I'm sure for these guys, should be the exact opposite of the questions that we are getting. It should be, what do we do to help you guys keep going? How do we keep you in the county? How do we keep the tax base growing? How do we keep creating jobs? So, that is a concern of mine, concern of everybody sitting here. As you can see, this was a thirty-minute phone call. If I had more time, again, we would, we would fill the place up just because there are so many people that work up there. I did do just a quick rundown and number on any given day inside of Eagles Nest, local people working in the gates, you're talking right at a thousand people on the mountain every day. Again, nowhere close to another job producer in the county even close to that, not accounting the tax bases. We just heard the budget, couldn't help but to smile a little bit when I heard the numbers that went up because of sales. If the planning board would not have held us on these plats, which we've been waiting on for four months for very, very minor, minor issues, that one oh-two or one oh-three number, I believe was Phillip, on the land sales would be at about a hundred and ninety for this standpoint of year, so you can just add that up in the tax base what that would be. So, and these guys here have produced that, that tax base, not only in land sales, the true tax base has come when these guys are putting houses on these lots, and they go out and do the valuations, it's a tremendous number. I think it's safe to say that we sitting here in this room have helped to fund, tax base-wise, along with Eagles Nest, and give us the, as the county, the ability to have the new swimming pool, do the expansion to the high school. So, again, I would just ask for consideration in looking at how things are handled. Again, we want to be completely upfront, we're transparent with everything, anything's asked of us, we try our best to do and do it as quickly as possible with working with all emergency management for inside the gates and outside the gates. So, anything we can do to make it a better relationship with the county, we're a hundred percent for it. Again, you know, biggest concern we have is, is the county's, the commission's board on, you're feeling towards subdivisions, towards Eagles Nest, toward expansion, and towards things moving forward from this standpoint. Again, we have stuff going on everywhere, and we don't want to leave Avery County, but if it gets too tough for us to do business here, because I can tell you, it is way harder on us right now in Avery County than it is in any other state we work in across the country. And those things, you know, we work with all these, these different officials, and we want to have a partnership, we want to, you know, see what we can do to help the county and, you know, how we get to that point, and that's really where we'd love to be with y'all. Again, that's kind of a short spiel, I wanted to just thank everybody for coming out, and I think that I spoke, and if anybody had anything else, but I think that covers the reason that you see so many people here is strictly concerned and want to see things continue to move in the path that it's been moving. And with that, I'll let you proceed with these plats, or if you have any comments to anything I said there, I would be glad to answer any questions.
If any commissioner got a question?
On this, this last flat, Derek, what's the smallest lot just off the top of your head?
What do you own these? I think three-quarters acre is going to be the smallest thing we've got on this. Most of these are going to go up an average of two acres, especially in ES lots, are going to go anywhere from two acres up to about ten acres. Again, that's all determined in field, we take, we painstakingly take our time when we're looking at this stuff. Aaron Winters, who's our soil scientist, who's also another local guy here with us tonight, he goes out and checks every one of these lots for us to make sure that nothing that we sell does not or will not be approved for septic. So, when we go out, we basically go off the topo, make sure that what is there is there, and we have a flat lot, it's on top of ridge, and absolutely, we're going to make it three-quarters acre. If it's a steeper lot that needs help, you got a driveway and a house site in a septic area, then you may see them up to ten acres or twenty acres, it just depends.
That was a redundant question because I knew, but I just wanted it in the minutes.
You got any, Mr. Oliver?
Go ahead, Dean. I'd just like to say, I'm a, when I ran, this is my second term, but when I ran four years ago, one of the things I talked about when I ran was keeping jobs in Avery County. I don't know if y'all remember that, but that's what I ran on. And I love, I mean, I like to see this, don't get me wrong, I mean, this is great, people working, and people local, people working in Avery County, and do, and getting to stay here, kids graduating from high school or tech schools and getting to come and work in Avery County is tremendous, and I, and I, and I'll say it on the record, I appreciate that, I really do. I think it's great. And as long as you do what's asked of you, I promise you, I'll do all I can to help, and I will, and I think we need to, we will look into the planning board and see if there's anything we can do to expedite the processes as far as, I mean, as long as, like I say, you're following the rules and regulations, we'll make, we'll, we'll look into it, I think, as a board to make sure that we can expedite processes.
We really appreciate that.
I think that's fair enough to say.
Yeah.
And like I say, I appreciate it, what you're doing. I know it's, I know there's people that, that doesn't like the seed developments and they don't like to see the land done this way, and it's the mountains, and you know how mountain people are, and I understand that because I'm the same way, I was, I'm an Avery County guy, and you know that, and my family's been here as long as I remember, and as long as we do it correctly and we, and you do it the way that it's supposed to be done, good job.
I do know that Derek, that their company from the very onset has gone above and beyond
what the state requires to be done in every aspect of what they've done. And we, in our budget ordinance, Phillip mentioned there's a ninety-five million dollar increase in the tax base. I did ask for how much of that, I'm sure a large part of that came from Eagles Nest. I do not have the exact numbers, I'm sorry, I was not informed in time to be able to get them. But with what's going on in Eagles Nest now, at some point in time, at some point in time in the future, you're going to have land, that, I mean, that, that's a given. But what we've got to realize is, when the construction slows, that there's still, there're going to be landscapers, painters, housekeeping, there's going to be a tremendous amount of people employed up there, and this is, in my opinion, the number one driving economic thing in the county right now, and I appreciate it, I appreciate it, and I'm a firm believer that when you buy a piece of property, that it's yours to do with as you please. I believe that's all my heart, I don't want anybody telling me what I do with what I buy, and I don't think we have the right to tell others. Of course, I know that there has to be restrictions put in place.
Absolutely.
But I also know that these restrictions stay down local are being followed by this group above and beyond what, what we're asking them to do, and I appreciate it. I appreciate what you all do, and thank you, and you know I support you.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, Mr. Stone.
I will, I've got a couple of questions on this particular platter, start with, on these that you presented. The Eagles Crest, the one that's across the new, the paved road, correct, it's on the, across Beach Mountain?
Old Beach Mountain Road, yeah.
No, no, Beach Mountain, the paved road.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I, I think old Beach Mountain Road coming.
The gravel road, yeah.
The gravel road. So, across there, and those twelve lots, and I also noticed that there's a, a large plat beside that that's, is subject to future development as well?
Yes.
Okay. See, I think that's one of the issues at least I have had, is, and we've talked about this, and I'm very transparent, is the fact that, you know, we, we get, oh, just parts and pieces of the whole, and like the other, the Eagle Springs at Eagles Nest, and I, I just wondered how many ways you can use eagle in a name, you know, but I think I've seen most of them, all of them, but Eagle Springs and out of season lots, seventy through ninety-three, so the first sixty-nine have been approved, and ten at a time, brought, you know, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, in.
A few of them, but a large part of that was, we done on a overall master plan, on Eagles Springs.
Right.
Eagle Crest was not.
Yeah. And, but the, you know, the, it doesn't matter, and I, allow me to use this as a phrase, I'm not saying it's what we got here, but a person could be stabbed and killed, but there's also that death by a thousand cuts, which you're still dead. And what we, what I, my anxiety and the concern that I have, and we represent here the entire county, every person that's a resident here, every person that's a property owner, and we have to be aware of that and the impact, and yes, there's no question of the impact economically that, that development has and all the people who are here, I take nothing from them. And, but it, the concern is the impact, five, ten years, and I do think we have to ask, where does it end? Because there's a, a point where density and all the things that come about begins to change the, the culture, the demographics, and everything around it. It's by virtue of everything, the, the, the rising tide raises every. It's by virtue of everything, the, the, the rising tide raises every boat and everything changes around it. And so by not having a, a view in terms of what we're hoping, it's all just coming in parcels and pieces. And we have to be thinking, okay, trying to project out, okay, we got twelve here, there's a hundred and twelve acres in that adjacent property, if I'm not mistaken. You know, there's another seventy-five to ninety, I'm, I'm just pulling numbers out of the air there. And this, the Eagle Crest, okay, here at ninety-three, I mean. And just the numbers begin to get massive after a while in terms of, of people and movement. And yes, it's all good in the development and the building, but then everybody's got to live here for the next fifty years after that. And that is, I think, the, the concern in terms of, you know, the, the, it's not, it's not the individual flats, not the individual impact, it's the totality of it. And how that's going to have impacts beyond what we see at this point. And I think that's where a lot of the concern lies. And just looking at these, a lot of friends and set with, that's where I, I see them in terms of, okay, that other huge pile here is, I, I rode up and drove on these, on the Eagles Crest and looked over and saw the, the other area. And I think, okay, what's, that, that's going to be something, obviously, or it wouldn't have been purchased. I mean, it's not going to sit there. So that's just more that's going to be brought. And without having any kind of a, and you know, when we say master plan, we get a, a drawing that says, okay, this is what we're going to do, but there's no substance to it, you know, because, and I know it's, well, it depends on what we buy. You know, it's going to buy here and it's going to buy here and it's going to buy here. But it's what he says, there's a point where there ain't no more buying. And then everything is, is driven by that which already exists. And as far as the, the planning board, I, I really find it hard to take exception. I personally think that it should be difficult to bring a thousand home sites or however many there are. It should be difficult. It should not be easy. And it should not be prohibitively or, or not evenly applied, but that same standard that applies to an individual contractor developing five acres that his mama gave him should be the same standard that applies to Eagles Nest. And it should not have anything other than that. And so the, the planning board and this board, when I look at it, I look at it in its total impact and try to project down the road and say, what are we, you know, what are we going to be looking at five, ten, fifteen years down the road? And where are we going to be and what's it going to look like? And so that's the only reason that I have any qualms at all. I'm not saying that it's not quality. Obviously, it's, it's done in, in ways that is well done. It's, it's, you know, we're not throwing up tiny homes, you know, I mean, or something like that. But it's the, it's, that's, the question that comes to mind for me is what we're looking at in its entirety over time. And the, the, and the reason that this board, I think, is not prohibitively questioning, but it's our job, we're given the responsibility to be aware and to act as advocates for everyone in the county that does not have a voice in what goes on. And we have to be that voice. We have to be that question. And that's why I personally take that very seriously of trying to be the one that whenever I get questioned at the grocery store and I get phone calls at home, I've got answers rather than, well, that's just the way it is. And so we, it should be a process. And I think it will, hopefully, it will continue to be. And our, these ordinances that we voted on today are all, of course, none of that had to do with anything we were doing. That was just all, as we said, all state mandated changes and mostly just verbiage and, and numbers. But if there's anything that comes about, about in terms of, of the application of existing statutes, our inspector and planning board tells us all the time that we have some of the most stringent rules in all of the state. And I have no problem with that. I think we should have because of where we live. If we take pride, if we like what we got, it should be difficult. It should be question, not, you know, like I say prohibitive, but it should not be just a rubber stamp. It should not be just something to go and do simply because the, the, the driver is there. And any qualms or any reservations that I exhibit is based on that premise.
I would say, I agree with, agree with some of what you said. I disagree with it being, should be difficult. I don't think it should be difficult in any way. I think it should be a very straightforward process with a detailed list of things that we are to do, a checklist from talked about. And if those checklists are acquired, then it should move forward. That's why just all the other counties we've worked with, we've done three massive projects, Walton County last year, each were in and out. Wouldn't say rubber stamp any mean, but we had a checklist, we followed it. They were tickled to have us there. They put us through, we went through, we sold the lots and they want to know where we're going to do something else because of their tax base. And to the, the plats and the master plats, you are correct, we cannot produce a master plan. We do buy more properties. When the Eagles Nest first started, we did have a master plan. We've updated the master plan about six times. And every time we do that, we take that master on that section to the planning board, let them approve at, by the chairwoman's request, a couple, probably about a year ago now, I guess. And that being with a hundred and fifty acre tract, our only option is, is we didn't know we were going to have that land a year ago. We were able to purchase it and at that point in time, all we have the ability to do is to master plan that particular section. You know, and for us, it's either don't develop no more or buy what we can buy, master plan that incorporated into overall concept, then present that to you. You know, so, you know, I get Dennis where he's coming from and, and, you know, I guess that's a, a complete board preference on which direction the county chooses to go. Because there is a, do we continue to grow or when's enough enough? And where do you hold? And that's only for the county and for y'all to decide. So as I said, you know, what we're presenting, what we're doing now, we hope to continue to grow, hope to continue to move forward. I'm sure everybody sitting here would also like to see things continue the way they're going. You know, how busy each and every one of these people sitting here are. And with thirty of the phone call, you can tell the, the response that they would also like to see things moving forward as residents of the county. So for that, I'll turn back to the board.
Well, I've been here thirteen years and I don't know of any time that we didn't work it out and you got to move on. And that's what I want to see in the future. Because when you buy property, like Woody said, you don't tell people what to do with it. And I don't want nobody telling me what to do with mine. If I want to sell it, I'm going to sell it. If they want to build a barn or whatever they want to, only if that's their business, it's not mine anymore. But the only time that we actually had a little problem was when the flat wasn't brought in and, and y'all didn't have it that I can remember. And if there's a problem, if you don't tell us, we can't fix it. And so we'll do our best to do whatever we can to fix the problem.
Thank you.
All right.
So we'll need a motion?
Yeah. To accept Eagles Crest and Eagle Springs. We have to do two separate motions, Michelle, or I'll let you do one. All right. We need a motion for Eagles Crest and for Eagles Springs. And it's EC one through EC twelve is Eagles Crest and lots ES seventy through ES ninety-three, Eagle Springs at Eagles Nest. Do I hear a motion?
One week second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you. Good good, you for signature, please, on those two.
All right.
Again, thank you for coming out, pretty good, and thank you, board.
We got one.
We got, we got one, Johnson County coming up.
I'm here, Sam.
Yeah.
Thank you, board.
All right. We're going to move along with our meeting and before we go in, we need to amend our agenda. And it's on opioid and.
The opioid settlement.
The M O A.
What do we need to add that add? I'll make that note.
Under county attorney.
I recommend the agenda under the county attorney section to address the memorandum of agreement. Not understanding memorandum of agreement for the opioid settlement from the state.
All right. Did I hear a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, get the money and go.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was trying to read.
All right, we amended the agenda. Now we'll go back up and we'll go with three point three C property damage relief. And I guess Mr. Barry can tell us about.
So the, the purpose of this release is to release the liability. Sorry, can't come wrong. It's to release the CD tapes and some plans so they can get their reimbursement. This did not cost the taxpayers anything. This is where we had the, at the Ag Building. And they fixed it. And now this is to release the liability.
It's to, and release the funds from the insurance.
And does that release them from future liability?
It should. Well, it is, it's written in there for that incident. But what it says is.
We have another incident in the same place, so.
Well, it's from that repair.
For that particular incident.
I see a ten on that.
And they've been living up to keep telling me that.
But now, but we're better.
Because what it, what it says is it's, it's a release growing out of repairs performed on March twenty-fifth and February, March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen and February the sixth, twenty-twenty on the drain at the Ag Building.
And this is June twenty-twenty-one.
So these are being.
So we're outside of the year anyway on those repairs.
If we don't release it, we keep the money.
We don't, the insurance company has the money. Insurance, we don't, we don't have the money.
It's not like this when they hand it.
So I make a motion, we're releasing the funds.
Okay. All in favor of releasing the funds on the property damage release, raise your right hand. And that's for the Avery County Ecoculture Extension Beltic. All right. All right, three point four, county commissioner's report and request, county manager's report.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry you've had to hear me all day. Let, let's talk about the good news with COVID and Avery County and how proud not only the employees, but the citizens. Last county in the state to have a positive case. Then when they started the mapping, they said, well, you're red. And we were one of the first thirteen to be, to be red. Just critical thing. Well, now, folks, we are one of the first five to go back to green. So we have had three cases positive in the last seven days, I'm proud to report. They're still testing the, the three days a week, still giving vaccines. The hospital, all your pharmacies in the county are, you can get a vaccine. And people, I believe, are doing the right thing. So, and you could call the eight-two-seven, seven-three-three, eight-two-seven-three and get someone directly to talk to in Spanish and in English what you need or any concerns with the vaccine. So we are moving ahead and very proud of that point. I did not realize that we had gone green until Thursday, when the news media started calling me to ask me what I attribute to that cause. And I'll brag on the citizens again, I think we've done the right thing in every county. Any questions? We hope this is behind us. Like to talk about broadband just a second. The ARC grant has been awarded to Skyline Skabess, that's through the Chamber of Commerce with a partnership with the county. And they are working in the Riverside area at this time. In your agenda consent items, there is a permission for the manager to sign a lease with probation and parole for the office space that we dedicate to them in the courthouse. And that lease was going to be for till May twenty-twenty-four. We need to pull that from the agenda because Madam Attorney over there let me know this afternoon that we have to advertise for thirty days before we can do that. So I'd like to ask the board to take that out of the agenda consent items and we will put that back on the July.
Whenever we have Thursday.
Thank you. The July twelfth meeting. Okay, so that's, that's number one. So that's not, it's in your agenda consent, but you're not voting on it today.
Have someone to make a motion to take that out.
Is that what we need, Michelle?
And then after thirty days is done, we can put it back in.
We'll do it in July, the, what she said.
Do I hear a.
I make a motion, we make that exclusion through the agenda consent items as stated.
All right, do I hear a second? All right, we've got a motion made in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Also in agenda consent, there are two letters for the Senior Center Meals, Home Delivered Meals and the Older American Act. Both of those programs were looked at and audited and no issues were found on either one of those programs. So good job to Philip Adams and his team at the Senior Center. They've done a great job through COVID and they have opened up for some programming. Going to slowly introduce people coming back to the building. Going to slowly introduce people coming back to the building. Lot of information to throw at you, so Summer Well starts next Monday, that's our four H program uh, with the school system and Wayami helps facilitate that and Bobby and Alicia with Jerry Staff does a great job with that. So we're looking forward to that getting started. Uh, you're invited to the ribbon cutting for Maglan's Blue Ridge Boutique Hotel. That will be uh, one o'clock on June the eighteenth. So I think that's in a couple of Fridays. Your retire, the retirement of David Charles Vance, um, scheduled to get some awards around one o'clock on this Thursday, June tenth. That social does start at eleven, cause there's some folks coming from Raleigh that have to get back to Raleigh. So we had to kind of, but none of the presentations will actually take place till one o'clock. Uh, we do have open enrollment for the employees, I just want to keep you up to date on that. Any changes they need to make with insurance or 401K or any thing like that. That will be tomorrow at center from eleven to three, oh, one to four, sorry, for the employees. There is.
Yeah, we've got to.
One to five?
No. No. It's five o'clock. We've got to go.
I'm like, are we having it from five?
Well, this.
So we gotta come back, it's your public hearing, okay?
All right.
Well, I'm not done, sorry.
Well, you'll have to wait a while.
Just hang on. I hear you.
It's time to go into our public hearing for the legislative hearing on Monday, June the seventh, two thousand and twenty one. Uh, the purpose of receiving public comments and regarding proposal amendments, we've already done that, to the Avery County Maximum Building Height Ordinance Included, but not limited to amended to complete with North Carolina General Statute's Chapter one sixty D. All right, do I hear a motion that we go into our public comments?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
Legislative hearing, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hands. Okay. All right.
So Michelle, you want to handle these?
Well, um, the board's already heard the introductory information on this. Uh, the hearing that is scheduled right now at five o'clock is the hearing regarding the maximum building height ordinance. Uh, the proposed changes are um, included on the uh, packet materials for the board to consider. Um, I guess uh, first, uh, we need to know if there is any members of the public who have any uh, questions or comments? Or any members of the board?
I just wanted to thank the attorney and for all the work that she's done on this, because it is being a bear. So thank you, Michelle. It was a rough process.
We're all powering through it.
All right, we heard the first one.
And just to let the board know, uh, yes, as you noted, for these land use ordinances, instead of public hearings, are now called legislative hearings.
Okay.
Uh, just to keep things uh, confusing, I think. Um, so what uh, we'll need is just the board, when the board goes out, the board wants to vote on it then, uh, away from the end, through the way it's done.
All right, do I hear a motion that we go out of our uh, public hearing? And do I hear that?
I so moved.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right. Had you to rather vote on all of them one time or take them step by step? Which way we.
We have, I'm to do it right now.
Yeah, all right, we'll just go ahead and vote on it and get it behind us. All in favor of maximum building height ordinance, raise your hand.
You need a motion?
So it would be in my motion. Show approved. Motion to approve.
All right, a motion to approve the resolution. And Tim made that and.
As my, I just, my one comment is that we're going from one fifty three A to one sixty A to one sixty D. And it's to make uniformity throughout the state for contractors and home builders, especially Home Build Association. To simplify things, plus when the state's going to save a ton of money from when they make the book. There's a hundred and twenty nine pages to this book, you've already said that. Instead of having to make a hundred and twenty nine pages for one fifty three and one sixty, they just say, okay, my fault, I'm going to leave. Go guys.
All right.
Same mistake.
You got a motion, did you get a second?
Yeah, I got a second, I see who, Dennis didn't he, or Tim?
Yeah.
Tim seconded it. All right.
Confused.
And all in favor, raise your hand. All right. Got that one behind. Now I need a motion to go in a public hearing for.
Hang on a second, that's cause it's only, now it's five oh five, go ahead. Hard as I said that.
All right.
Go ahead.
We need a motion to go in public hearing to receive public comments on flood damage prevention ordinance.
We'll move.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second and.
So similar to the previous one, uh, have a resolution for the board to consider, uh, with the proposed changes. There were minimal changes uh, on this ordinance that it was coming having to add.
No, I mean, the, the, the FEMA ordinance is uh, it's FEMA approved by the state for hazard mitigation. So we, we, we get FEMA money just like we did for the, for the bypass here in Newland and the, and the Riverwalk. And it's all good, we have one of the, we have an ordinance that's approved by the state and FEMA.
All right. If any other members of the public have comments, questions, or any board members?
If not, do I hear a motion to go out of our public hearing?
I make a motion to go out of public hearing.
All right, Tim made the motion and uh, Mr. Aldridge seconded. All right, we'll take a vote, it's five minutes after five on the.
So I'd just be looking for uh, uh, a motion to approve the resolution and to make the uh, changes to the uh, flood damage prevention ordinances indicated on the ordinance in the agenda packet.
I make the motion on what she said.
All right. Uh, we have a motion on the floor and uh, Mr. Aldridge seconded. All in favor, raise your hand. All right.
Thank you, Miss Michelle.
Well, it's not quite five after ten, so we'll have to wait a few minutes.
I'll make a couple of announcements. Back on the county manager. I can make two, right? Okay, so Avery Community Center, this uh, June the tenth, the Fair Board is putting on a music festival, and I believe there's something in your informational items about that, so help advertise that. Heritage Festival on the square by the museum will be June twenty sixth from nine to three. So we're glad that COVID is behind us and they can also have that event, which is always well received. Uh, BIA Health, our mental health provider for our county, has partnered with Cardinal and they will consolidate, um, BIA already has twenty two counties. The other counties have an option whether they want to come with BIA or go out with their own entity. Uh, so that could be fourteen more counties stronger, uh, to be under the BIA umbrella. I think that will give us a great voice in Raleigh when they see how many counties in the western part of the state are with BIA. And uh, I think there's like eight hundred employees that are in these bigger counties. Uh, that will be under their umbrella when this does happen. One more minute. The jail also had an inspection, um, no deficiencies were found, that's also in your informational items. And I will stop there, we'll talk about the American Rescue Plan next. And it's five oh nine.
Don't you think you can have that done before ten minutes after five?
To think that every county in the state has to do this.
And there, and a lot of counties have more regulations than we have, they have a lot more ordinances.
Far, far.
And we don't have any of those.
I'm just thankful to say that I appreciate uh, our attorney for telling us to get someone to handle this and get it all packaged, because.
He did a good job.
He did a good job and we want to do a good job, but some things we just can't. I couldn't have went through it and tried to word it like he did, and I appreciate that, Michelle. All right. All right, we'll have another public hearing at five ten, the High Impact Protection Ordinance. Do I hear a motion that we go into the public hearing?
Second.
All right, we have the motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All right. And we'll get Michelle to go ahead and talk about that.
Again, it's the uh, the changes that uh, were highlighted in the presentation earlier and set forth on the ordinance in your packet. Um, I don't think the high impact ordinance needs a whole lot of use from the planning department. Um, I don't know if there are any comments or anything on this ordinance and changes.
No, it's just time, it's, it's all, it's all good.
So uh, just asking uh, asking the board to consider uh, those changes whenever we get out of public hearing.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have the motion to go out in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All right. We uh.
Similarly on this one, be looking for a, a motion to uh, approve the resolution and to authorize, to adopt the changes to the High Impact Protection Ordinance that's set forth on the uh, changes outlined in the agenda packet.
Move to adopt the resolution and amend the High Impact Protection Ordinance for Avery County.
Do I hear a second?
You've been practicing.
All right.
Time to bring her. Time to read.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to do the High Impact Protection Ordinance and the resolution. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
I need a second.
Oh, to get hope, all right. All right, everybody in favor, raise your hand. Okay. What time?
Five twelve, three minutes, okay. You have informational items about the Avery Rescue Plan. But listen to this part. The rules and regulations are still being discussed, there are very vague guidelines. We've already received some money, okay? That's in Caleb's report later. When I have, when we have real rules and real regulations, we will begin having workshops and meetings, okay? I came to Council of Governments, is, is pledging to help us, all the counties that sent with the COG, to help us with this guidance, it is totally confusing right now, but we will keep you posted. Yes, the governor come out and said they're going to spend some money on broadband. And yes, the governor come out and said that you can do some things with the water and sewer infrastructure. But we do not have guidance yet, so as soon as we know on the floor, what we can and cannot do, we will begin having workshops. So with that said, I'm saying a whole lot of nothing, because it's so vague right now, the guidelines are vague. And that's across the United States. Five thirteen, and that, that's all my report, Madam Chair. So we could move to the, let the finance officer start?
Uh, I don't think he's got enough time, cause he's got several things in uh, to do, so. We'll just go ahead and finish up this, and then we'll be through with it. I think this is one of the biggest agendas that I've even been in in thirteen years. And I won't say I read it all, either. I hush through it. But I'm sure that Cindy could just about quote it this many times, she's typed it up, fixed. All right.
I move we go into legislative hearing for the Mountain Ridge Protection Ordinance.
You did good. All right, boy, you're good with that, we have the motion on the floor to go in and take care of the Mountain Ridge Protection.
I'll second that.
And we have a second?
I don't know. I didn't hear that. You didn't speak that.
All right, we've got the motion in a second, all in favor of going into the public hearing, raise your hand. All right, now then, we'll turn it over to Michelle.
Uh, this public hearing is to address proposed changes to the Mountain Ridge Protection Ordinance. Uh, to bring the board's attention, this ordinance is originally enacted in nineteen eighty three. I think it's one of the older ordinances that we have in the county, that we're still actively using. Um, again, just uh, uh, would be asking the board to approve the changes as submitted on the uh, the document in the agenda packet. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments?
It's uh, was caused by the Sugar Top, of course, back in the day. We have three cell towers stealth up there, plus the county has the emergency, encounter, emergency frequency agenda there. So, even though it is the tombstone and we don't like it, it is serving, uh, it is serving a purpose.
All right. We've heard our comments. Uh, do I hear a motion that would go out of the public hearing? For.
Mountain Ridge.
Mountain Ridge Protection Ordinance.
So moved.
All right.
Second, your turn.
All right, we have a motion in a second to go out of the public hearing. Please raise your hand.
And we would be um, asking for a uh, a motion to uh, adopt the resolution.
Resolution.
And adopt the changes in the uh, ordinance that's shown in the uh, copy in the agenda packet.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the Mountain Ridge Protection Ordinance for Avery County.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and a second, all in favor of adopting and accepting the resolution, raise your hand. All right.
Cindy on scene, force.
She's been here with Lee. I promise.
He took me left mechanically, Tommy's on it, could we?
Do you want to uh, approve the minutes? We can go down and approve the minutes?
Okay, that's for May. I'm not going to turn down the plan.
May fourth, twenty twenty one, regular session.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the minutes for May the fourth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting?
Two thousand and twenty one.
Twenty one, yeah.
Move we approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Your turn, next team. I've got therapy, Mark. More motions made this meeting, any meeting I ever can.
That lasted so much we had that time for sure. Two hours.
I'm here to mark the loss.
We're going to get out of here earlier than we thought.
Yeah, we are.
We're going to get out of here earlier than we thought.
I asked you why you passed down to stay here at seven o'clock. I thought maybe you
I thought you was going to talk about what you did.
Red box cleaning.
All right. We'll go down to the public hearing for number five, Sexual Oriented Business Ordinance. Do I hear a motion that would go into the public hearing?
So move.
All right.
Second.
We've got a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, we're going to turn it over to Michelle to talk about this.
I know you'll be shocked, but if this is for the board to, uh, adopt changes to the county's sexually oriented businesses ordinance, uh, due to the changes in one sixty D, the changes are set forth on the, uh, ordinance with the draft in the agenda packet. Uh, so I don't know if anyone has any comments on this, uh, ordinance or the changes.
It's a very proactive ordinance. Uh, if we didn't have it and somebody wanted to go over and use or lump free and set up a, uh, whatever, really, what's called it? Well, it's a, well, a, a strip club, they could because it's, there's no, nothing, no laws that prohibit it. So by being proactive, every county being proactive, this is, this is really a, I, I think, an excellent law.
All right, do I hear a motion to go out of the public hearing?
Make a motion to go out of the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right, now we'll vote on number five, Sexual Oriented Business Ordinance and the Resolution. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the Sexually Oriented Business Ordinance for Avery County.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right. All right, we'll go, no, we won't go yet. We've got to wait a few minutes.
We're going to wait five minutes.
Do, at this point.
Listen, this is not normal, by the way. Yeah, we're, we're sorry, this is your first meeting.
No, I was like, man, they are very exacting. Once a month, twice a month, wow.
On these public hearings, you have to do it right on the minute, not a minute too early.
Oh, we are on TV, but.
And I thought you were coming up to one's part of the, thank you.
Dr. Clark.
Playing part of Rudy.
Heard that a lot of counties just send it, send it in and will not get it all back.
Maybe gas tanks is the, uh, for the education for school weapons. That is true. Number one is safer.
Oh. Oh, that, that makes me, that makes me, yeah. My email is in there for me, yeah.
Are we ready?
One more minute, it's Martha's hour.
Everybody knows this, it's, our watches are not together.
I'm going off the official. I'm going off the world clock. About to finish.
We will go into a public hearing for, at five twenty-five, watershed protection ordinance and resolution. Do I hear that would go into the public hearing?
So move.
All right, we have a motion, do I hear a second? All right, we have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay?
We're going home up here, it'll be good.
All right, we're in our public hearing for the watershed protection ordinance and resolution. Michelle, would you like to?
I'll just note to the board that there were few changes on this. I didn't have many changes at all on this particular ordinance to make it compliant with one sixty D, so I don't know if any members of the public have any comments or questions on this particular ordinance or changes.
It's all governed by the ANSI, North Carolina Administrative Code. We have to go by the, of course, you have the WS five right here, WS three down in the lower end of the county next to the intake, plus you have a WS two and a WS one up on Beach Mountain. So it's all governed by the Division of Water Quality, really not anything that we, if there's changes come down, then we get them to Michelle, they get them to you and you change them.
All right.
We have forty-five seconds.
Can I go out now? Is it time? All right, we're gonna make a motion to go out of our public hearing for the watershed protection ordinance and resolution. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
All right, Mr. Aldridge made the motion. And Mr. Phillips second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right. Now, we need to vote.
Need to adopt the resolution.
Yeah.
I make a move, we adopt the resolution to amend the watershed protection ordinance for Avery County.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have the motion on the floor and a second to adopt the watershed protection ordinance and resolution. All in favor, raise your hand. All right.
I'm going to kill him, because he's on roll.
Yeah, I am. Right here in front of me. I'm ready to have to score.
I did it the easy way.
You just said, I thought what she said. Deferred.
I did it the easy way. I did, yeah, what she said. She'll all come down to have seen you top it out.
I'll top it out like she's right. Then it's right.
Exactly. That's the reason I said what she said. Five twenty-eight.
That's where I'm going.
That's where I'm going.
And that's to be five thirty?
I'm going to five twenty-eight twice. Five, I thought, for you to be in here just to ask a hundred questions.
When I was young boy at Madden, when I was back in church, I always said, we'd all know when Jesus came. And I said, now all the clocks will not be synchronized, but with cell phones, we're all on British time. We're all on the exact time, so God made it that way, we'll all know.
So we all know.
Exactly.
Hope he has Andy when he's coming back. Andy told me he didn't know, said he wasn't on the planning committee, he's on the welcoming committee. That's good. That's good. He's bringing a nine by thirteen casserole. Hope we have time to prepare our casserole before we go. I might, I've got to get this casserole out of the freezer. I'm sure I'll get angry on the way.
I think you're right. You know, usually you're right.
No, we're not. Never quite. Especially when you do six resolutions, right? We apologize, but we're, uh, accurate.
Next time, we'll set the clock right. Back there, it's a little
You're right, it's dope.
Okay.
All right. We're going into our public hearing to receive public comments for the subdivision ordinance and resolution. Do I hear a motion that would go into the public hearing?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
What are you shirking here? Oh, second.
All right, we have the motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, we're in our public hearing and we'll turn it over to Michelle.
Uh, I'll just say to the board that, uh, one sixty D required several changes to the subdivision ordinance, particularly in the, uh, hearing process and how the hearings are conducted. Uh, just asking the board to approve all those changes, um, that's set forth on the copy in your agenda packet. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments.
No, I mean, it's just, you know, they're, well, that's a judicial is what it may be working at, right?
Will it be up to the planning board to see if these are, uh, here for two?
Tommy in the planning board to some extent, I guess. He's got a little light reading ahead of him.
All right. Go out of our public hearing for the subdivision and ordinance. Do I hear a motion?
So move. Second.
All right, everybody that's in favor, raise your hand. We'll get to go home quick. All right. Now we're going to take a vote for the public hearing to receive to adopt the resolution and the ordinance. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Make a resolution to adopt the, uh, I make a move, I make a motion to adopt the resolution to amend Avery County's subdivision ordinance.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right.
And I would just point out to the board as well, there are changes to the sedimentation and soil erosion ordinance, and we will have those on for the board's consideration a separate day. The, uh, consultant didn't have any of those changes, so that was not part of his presentation, all was in front of the board. The planning board and Tommy had worked on subdivision ordinance and had, um, several updates recommended by the state for that, and, uh, that'll be on before the board at another meeting.
So that finishes, that finishes all seven of them. And then the next one is, uh, three point four B, our finance officer's report.
Well, the room was full when I, we started, and it's clear that, uh, Tommy gets to me every time, so I'm beginning to get a complex, but I have a few items here for your consideration. Uh, item number one, the Department of Social Services has received an allocation of seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents from the state pandemic LEAP, Low Income Energy Assistance Program. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit LEAP, general fund line item sixty-eight hundred dot six zero nine five in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents and to credit county welfare general fund line item thirty-six thirty-four in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents.
Do I hear a motion that we adopt the Low Income Energy Assistance Program?
So move.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right.
Item number two is the Avery County Board of Elections has received reimbursement from the state for supplies and labor used in the twenty-twenty general election in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit wages poll workers, general fund line item forty-three hundred dot zero two four zero in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. To debit CARES Act, general fund line item forty-three hundred dot thirty-seven hundred in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. To credit elections revenue, general fund line item thirty-seven oh six in the amount of thirty thousand, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
All right, do I hear a motion for the twenty-twenty general election in the amount of thirty thousand, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents?
Will you adopt? Second. Amendment two.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to adopt, and we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay?
Item number three, the Sheriff's Department has been awarded the Operation Pocket Change Grant in the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars to fund expenses related to the DARE program. Uh, I will make one quick note on this one. Uh, because this is received near the end of this year, it will most likely be a budget amendment request in the next year to move these funds forward. Uh, since these funds are earmarked for the DARE program. Uh, request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit DARE drug prevention, general fund line item fifty-one hundred dot fifty-one hundred in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars and to credit, uh, ACH SRO program, general fund line item thirty-five oh six in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion that we adopt this two thousand and five hundred dollars to fund expenses related to the DARE program?
So move.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Item number four, the, uh, County of Avery has received lottery fund reimbursement in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for the completion of the Cross North School Roof Project. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit Avery County Schools' capital outlay, general fund line item seven thousand dot six one one five in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and to credit proceeds from lottery funds, general fund line item thirty-eight twenty in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, do I hear a motion to adopt the completion of the Cross North School Roof Project, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So move.
Do I hear a second? All right, we have adoption on the floor and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, board. Uh, the Avery County Department of Transportation has received fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars to provide reimbursement for the costs associated with offering transportation to citizens needing the COVID-nineteen vaccine. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit CARES Act, general fund line item sixty-three hundred dot thirty-seven hundred in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and to credit transportation revenue, general fund line item thirty-six ten in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the offering transportation to citizens needing the COVID-nineteen vaccine of fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars?
Sixty-two dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to adopt. We have a second. All in favor? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you. Item number six, the County of Avery has received FEMA reimbursement for expenses related to pandemic response. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit FEMA general line, general fund line item fifty-two fifty dot thirty-three oh four in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and eighty-three cents and to credit emergency management revenue, general fund line item thirty-eight twelve in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the FEMA reimbursement for expenses related to pandemic response? Forty-six thousand, three oh nine, eighty-three.
We're good, doc.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to adopt and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Caleb, where does this money go? Does it go into the general fund? Does it go into the each department's fund?
So the...
Fair question.
That is a fair question. The line item, FEMA line item fifty-two fifty, that's emergency management's budget, which is a line item that was created, and that's kind of where all these expenses have been funneled through. And it's various expenses, a lot of them of recent times have been the vaccine clinic, gravel, when all those vehicles was going up through there and it was washing out and getting muddy, putting gravel. And we've asked for reimbursement from FEMA to help with that and many, that's just a small example.
Okay, but my question, I guess, again, in a different way is, this money comes back into that fund. I guess, what can it be used for? Emergency management home?
It's a reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement. We've already spent these funds that we weren't planning on spending. So we had to have porta jons for a week or so up there.
Yeah, I understand that, but we got reimbursed. So does the...
Forgetting reimbursed. Forgetting reimbursed.
Okay, but is there reimbursement going to emergency management's?
It is to repay emergency man...
Yes.
Yes, I think that's what you're trying to do. It's to repay emergency management where they spend that money out of their lineup.
Okay. We've overspent.
So basically, any of the, you come in, you will be relating it to the original expenditure. In other words, you'll just be crediting back what was the original, the containment account that was paid out. Am I correct?
That is correct. And there will, but there's a lot of overtime associated with COVID that we've asked for reimbursement. So when that comes in, we will put it into that. But more than likely, it will not happen by June thirtieth that we'll get any more reimbursement from FEMA. So that next meeting that we have in June, there'll be a lot of budget amendment, knowing that we will get that money back from FEMA eventually in the next fiscal year. We'll put it back in the, and it'll go back to the general fund where it should, should have never come out. Does that make sense? So we've had to spend money on COVID that we should, that we're going to get reimbursed by FEMA, but they are so overwhelmed, it's taking, this isn't... We've sent them in in October and we're just now getting, we're just now receiving little pockets of the, of our reimbursement. And it's money that was spent back in October.
But I'm sure you have to check to see that the money was spent appropriately.
Oh, yeah.
For the reimbursement.
Oh, yeah. It is a lot of paperwork and documentation.
Unbelievable amounts.
That's why we needed to want them. Was probably, to tell you the truth, if we hadn't of hard to want them to do this, I don't know if we'd have got anything back or not. All right?
Um, I'll, I'll preface, seven and eight is going to go ahead and it's going to kind of run together. Line item, item seven and item eight, there's going to be a resolution that covers both those items.
Oh, excuse me, Caleb, I don't mean to interrupt, but I laid a resolution on your staff.
Again, I want to thank our county attorney.
Hey, look.
So this is the resolution that we'll adopt. Let's, Caleb, let's... So hit the...
And I'll also say this. So unlike with the CARES and the FEMA money, we've received guidance. We have a little more time now to understand the things that are coming down the pipeline. And this is going to be to set up a special revenue fund to keep, it's not going to be channeled through departments' funds this time. It's going to be on its own. It's going to be like, from CDBG funds has its own fund. It's going to be kept in the same bank account, but it's going to be on the accounting side, kept separately. And that's going to be very beneficial for accounting and reporting purposes. So we can show where all that money come in and went out. And it won't skew our general fund reporting. So when, when you see our general fund revenues, you're not going to see a, this money's not going to corrupt those reports, so to speak. So item number seven and eight, I'll read them concurrently. As stated in General Statute, Chapter 160A, Section seventeen point one, only the governing body of any city or council, city or county is hereby authorized to make contracts for and to accept grants and aid and loans from the federal government, federal and state governments and their agencies for constructing, expanding, maintaining, and operating any project or facility or performing any function for which the city or county may be authorized by general law or local act to provide or perform. The board must vote to authorize the receipt of funds and then delegate authority to the manager, mayor, or another employee or official to execute any necessary agreements on behalf of the board. Then item number eight says, per LGC guidance and pursuant to NC General Statute 15926 subsection B subsection two, it is requested that the board grant permission to create a special revenue fund for the American Rescue Plan funds to be held in and dispersed from. This fund will be separate from all their funds for the purpose of accounting and reporting. I read the resolution before you. Now therefore be it resolved as the Avery County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session of the seventh day of June 2021 hereby establishes a special revenue fund for the purposes of receiving funds from the American Rescue Plan and documenting and accounting for the same, be it further resolved that the county manager and county finance officer are authorized to execute any reports, dispersments, schedules, or other forms for the accounting of such funds.
We adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the resolution and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right?
Thank you very much. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
No, but thank you.
You're welcome.
I know you, I know you get called on probably on a regular basis to come up with stuff at the spur of the moment, and it's appreciated.
It's my pleasure. It's what I'm here for.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.4C, County Attorney's Report.
I believe there are two things that need to be gone over under my report. The first is the Medicaid Managed Care Provider Agreement with one call. The county manager and Debbie have been over this a lot. We've had a lot of back and forth, but I believe that we've got the agreement ready to be approved by the board on this.
And the county attorney has taken her time and went through this word for word and has had everything corrected that she feels is in the best interest of the citizens of the county. So I appreciate her doing that because it was not fun.
All right. Have I found the right paper? Is it?
It's the One Call Medicaid Managed Care Provider Agreement.
All right.
For the Avery County Transportation.
With Avery Transportation.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt? Did everybody sound it? All right.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
And I will tell the board that there is another provider. We have worked with that provider. We have done same calls with that provider, and they did not satisfactorily meet the needs that we feel like...
They were still reviewing. They're still, we're still going back and forth on just one provision.
So there'll be another one in front of you at one of the next meetings.
And these are all the result of the Medicaid transformation?
Yep.
Yes.
Process that the state is going through right now.
Required.
Yes.
Even so, the individual got a letter and told them to pick who they want to sign in. Now, it's going to be whoever they pick.
Basically, you create the whole category of middlemen.
Yeah. All right. Do you have anything else?
The second thing I have is regarding the opioid litigation. As the board might recall, the state has been trying to negotiate a settlement on the various opioid lawsuits. There's some materials that were forwarded to the board. There is a memorandum of agreement with the counties and the state. It's a rather long document for the board to consider. It's thirty-eight pages. It has signature pages, one to the state and one to the county for the board to review. Then there are a couple of information items in the packet for the board. Just some information sent out by the NCACC regarding the settlement. And what this would do is the county participates in it, and the county would be eligible to receive a portion of settlement proceeds from the state. So there is a resolution for the board to consider. This was a resolution form approved by the NCACC.
All right. We heard what our attorney told us about this resolution. Do I hear a motion that we adopt?
Salute.
All right. We've got it on the floor now. Who wants to second?
I'll second.
Okay. We've got a lot to read and a big packet, so...
And, and board, these, these funds are...
I emailed it to you.
Oh. So it looks like the state will be getting eight hundred and fifty million dollars in the settlement. Our county will get zero point two six five and a bunch of other numbers percent of that money, which will equate to two million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. It's over an eighteen-year period, and the money must be spent on doing something about the drug crisis in your county. So... But the first part of this is to do these memorandum of agreements. So...
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second.
And again, when there's guidance, we'll, we'll drift accordingly. And Caleb, I'm sorry, it's going to involve you too.
It's between the state of North Carolina and the local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid...
Investigation.
Out. Thank you, Cindy. So how do you vote? Raise your hand. All right?
And I don't have anything else for the board to consider unless the board has questions on anything that's going on.
Does the board have anything for Michelle to answer at this time? If not, let's see, we've got our upcoming meetings.
Yeah, so we'll have a second meeting in June because we got some accounting cleanup, some things to do. So that's the twenty-first. And then the, the what? Our meeting for July, we had already decided last month that that would be rescheduled to July the twelfth and that we would cancel our second meeting in July, which was the nineteenth. So that's actually will be called, I put regular meeting, but it will actually be called a special meeting because it's different than the regular scheduled one. So I'll get that out to you.
We've got our directions and we need to follow them. For July the twelfth. And we can go party on July the nineteenth.
There you go.
All right.
And I've got a call up here for her to sign. And then I don't know about this one call thing. I think Debbie's, we might get Debbie's.
Who signed that?
Michelle? You do.
That's simple enough.
But I, I need all the commissioners to sign the ordinance before you leave.
All right. And when you get your signature and you recognize it, then you go on.
Wait, no, we're trying to...
You've got about seven, eight things to sign.
So if you want to go ahead in the turn, we'll get...
Well, go on. I don't hope to be that soon to go.
Are we ready? We can go ahead in the turn.
I'm going, yeah.
Move your turn.
I didn't hear that. Hang on a minute.
Move your turn. Second. What am I going to do?
Why, certainly we need to...